Okay. The December eighth, 2020 meeting of the Burnards Township Planning Board is now called to order. Please stand for the right seat.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting that the Planning Board of the Township of Burnards was posted in on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Burnardsville News, Whippany, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on October fifth, twenty twenty, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The filing procedure has been adopted by the Burnards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after ten P.M., and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after ten thirty P.M. Roll call, Ms. Kiefer, please. Chairwoman Panici. Here. Ms. A.C.
Yeah.
Mr. Crane.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Divergian.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Esposito.
Here.
Committee Woman Harris.
Here.
Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Mr. McNally.
Here.
Ms. Mandu.
Here.
Ms. Masturangelo.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Bannon.
Here.
Mr. Drill.
Here.
Ms. Marselli is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Schleig?
Here.
For the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Chairwoman, you have a quorum. You may proceed. Thank you very much. Like to have a motion to approve the minutes of November seventeen, twenty twenty regular session. We had a full house, so everybody's eligible to vote or make a motion. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Committee Woman Harris, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. A.C. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Next item is the Landscape and Lighting Committee's selection for Crown Court Associates, LLC Block eighty-five zero one, lots seven and nine, Crown Court Drive, PB eighteen dash zero zero four. Mr. Schleig, can you please, for the benefit of new members, explain what this committee will be doing?
Yeah, once in a while, when there's a landscaping issue, when the board is a little uncomfortable approving it, only seeing it, seeing the landscaping on paper, they'll ask the applicant to agree to a post-installation inspection of the landscaping to make sure that the buffering is adequate, or whatever the purpose of landscaping is, that it actually, the board gets what it sees on the paper in real life. Same thing for lighting. In the case of lighting, you could have a situation where the board wants to be sure that there's adequate lighting, the board wants to be sure that there's not too much lighting, or glare, or there will lighting effects on neighbors, things like that. For this application, which was a new apartment building on Crown Court Drive with a parking lot, there is both situations, landscaping and lighting. Typically, the board appoints three, three board members, go out, take a look at it with the applicant's representative, and see how it is, and make any recommendations for additional landscaping, additional lighting, less wattage for the lighting, anything like that, and that would be arranged. I'll provide additional details to whoever the three committee members are when, when that will be scheduled for the inspection. It won't be until the new year.
Okay. Thank you. As Mr. Schleig said, three members. I would like to be on the committee, so I would like to have two additional members, please, who would be willing to go out and do a visual exp-.
I'll go, please.
Ms. Masturangelo. Okay, anybody else?
I'll go, Chairwoman.
Who's that? Oh, Andrew. Okay, Mr. McNally, and Ms. Masturangelo and myself. So you, you will put that together for us, David.
Yeah, I will be in touch. It will likely not be till next year. The inspection certainly won't be till next year.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing that was last heard on June second, twenty twenty. William and Carol Moyet, Lot eleven, four zero one, Lot eleven, eleven Mountain Road, minor subdivision number PB seventeen dash zero zero one. Is Mr. Parker coming up?
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
I had recused myself previously.
Okay, very good. And we'll call you back in. Yes, Deputy Mayor Esposito has just recused himself from the hearing. I think for the benefit of the board, Mr. Parker, could you sort of recap where we are at this point, and give us a little summary, so that we know what we're looking at going forward, please?
Sure.
This is brief housekeeping, but this hearing on this application actually commenced on February fourth, twenty twenty, when the Moyets were sworn in, Mr. Parker was sworn in, David Schleig, and David Bassett were sworn in. And as the chair, the hearing continued on June two, twenty twenty, and hopefully tonight will be the conclusion of the hearing.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Sure, this is a, this is a minor subdivision application. It's property located on Mountain Road and, well, it's, the address is, is a Mountain Road. It's a minor subdivision. It's one, one lot into two lots, so creating one new lot. The existing house is going to remain on one of the lots. The, will remain on a lot that's two point seven acres, and the new lot that's being created will be three point one nine acres. And the, the application that's here before the board tonight is basically the same one for the subdivision purpose as, as the one that was here back in June. In other words, the proposed lot line hasn't changed. The, the specifics of the application remain the same. However, as a result of the prior board hearing and some, a meeting with, or a couple of meetings with the board professionals, the location of the house on proposed Lot eleven point oh two, which is the corner lot, has been adjusted. And it was the, it was discussed the last time, and I think if you look at page, sheet three of the plans that were submitted to the board, it shows that the home site, the proposed home set.
Sheet number three.
With the map, are you too concerned?
Yeah.
Just talk it out.
Sorry about that. Yeah, the, if you look at sheet number three of the plan set that was submitted to the board, it shows the location, the new location of the, of the house on the corner lot. It's on the corner of Martinsville Road and Mountain Road. And what's different about this location from the prior plan is that this house has been pulled much closer to the road than it was before. It's about a hundred and one feet away from Martinsville Road, and that was in response to the discussions that we had at the board meeting last time, and the discussions with the board professionals as well. And that was done, and again, just to remind, the, the bulk of proposed Lot eleven point oh two, you can see, is encumbered by wetlands and wetland buffer areas. They are proposed to be filled as part of this application, and filling them allows us to meet the, the minimum improvable lot area requirement of the, of the township ordinance. But the house has been pulled up closer to the road, and that does, that does a couple of significant things. It reduces the overall amount of wetlands pretty significantly that are proposed to be filled from the, from the last time we were here. Right now, we're proposing to fill about a little over ten thousand square feet, and before, I think it was somewhere close to thirty-eight or thirty-nine thousand square feet. So this will actually, and then, and then, of course, the remainder will be preserved within an easement, a conservation easement. So this will result in a much larger wetland preservation area, or preserved wetland area on the, on the, in the project than was proposed before. So the driveway location has been, you know, moved closer to the intersection with Martinsville Road before it was located a little bit further to the west. And again, those are all a response to comments from the board, but that's really the extent of the changes. The, like I said, the subdivision remains the same. The lot areas are going to be the same as they were before. There still is a variance for the, the density. Only one lot is permitted on this property when you subtract out the numbers in accordance with your ordinance. So we're requesting a variance for that, but that is the only variance, and that was the variance that was there before. But this plan results in a much smaller disturbance, in a much smaller area of wetlands that's being proposed to be filled.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board on Mr. Parker's testimony? Questions from the professionals? We do have some professional reports to review that are quite significant.
I have.
Yes, go ahead.
So the dwelling is shown as a hundred more feet setback from Martinsville Road, correct?
That's correct.
So assume the board grants the approval, what should the condition say? No less than a hundred, no more than something else, or should it say one-on-one? Because if it says it's one-on-one, then the house got to be one-on-one. You know what I mean? Maybe either of the Davids, if they have a suggestion, and also Mr. Parker, if you have a suggestion. I take it that what the board professionals and what you tried to do, and it looks like did, was the setback is known as a hundred feet.
That's correct.
But the master plan says that it should be two hundred feet if you preserve.
No, if you can't, if there are no, if there are no natural features like hedge roads, or, or other natural features in the land to hide new development, then an enhanced setback of two hundred feet is required.
Right.
But where hedge roads exist, then the, the standard one hundred foot required setback is proposed.
Right, so, so the requirements.
Look for something in the neighborhood of a hundred feet.
Right, so the requirement to a hundred feet, there should be a condition that they have to maintain the existing hedge roads.
Yes.
But what if they're not ready to, you know, a hundred more feet like they show? I don't want them to have a, a problem on the one hand, but I don't want them to physically be able to put it further back, even though the plan shows it where it is, and all you guys are happy with it. That's what I'm looking for. I'm trying to get some flexibility and not just have a hundred-one feet. Or if your surveyor makes a mistake, you'll be back here.
Dave and I just talked about this hundred to a hundred and three feet. It's got to be within that.
Okay, how does that sound?
That's fine. That's from Martinsville Road. It's more than that from Mountain Road.
Doing on the hundred twenty-two.
Yeah, so what's on the other one? If you show a hundred twenty-two, you went from a hundred twenty to a hundred twenty-five?
I, I'm not as concerned with that front yard setback, and I'd like to give them some flexibility with that driveway, because he's got the second system in there. Let's say a hundred forty on that.
A hundred twenty, a hundred twenty to a hundred forty.
Yes. You gotta let them have, let them have.
Mr. Parker, how does that sound?
That's fine.
Does that make sense to you, Steve?
It does. Yep, yep, understand.
Okay, and, hold on. And they have to maintain the hedge roads. If you maintain the hedge roads, then you require them to a hundred, not to one.
Right, right.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. And for master plan consistency, we're suggesting something like a thirty-foot easement along the road to maintain that hedge road.
A thirty-foot conservation easement?
Yeah, of sorts. Not a strict conservation easement in the sense that, well, I think this, this merits some board consideration and discussion. The idea is to have some kind of a control in place like an easement, but maybe allow some flexibility for changes to the vegetation that occupies that conservation easement for the new owners. But in no case, eliminating the screen that is shown on the plan. And you can see, you can see the roadside vegetation that establishes the hedge road very clearly on sheet three. So the easement that we're suggesting would be about thirty feet wide from the road, and it would be within those limits, so that there's that one window of visibility through the front yard, as you see on sheet three. And then, also, an opening for the driveway off of Mountain Road. But other than that, the easement should allow the new property owners to landscape it as they may see fit, but maintain it. That, that's our suggestion, and we hope for the board to give some consideration.
How does the board feel about Mr. Bannon's suggestion?
Is there any site easement for that corner?
Pardon me?
Is there a site easement for the corner?
Well, to the extent that there may, or I think we should ask Mr. Parker that question.
Yeah, actually, but the Somerset County came through and improved that intersection several years ago, and they, they acquired some of the property there that was within the site easement. So you can see how the corner is kind of clipped off there. That's the site easement corner. So I don't believe there's any, any additional site easement requirements or encroachments. Somerset County did review the, this plan and this application, and they made no comments about that, additional site requirements. So I would say, no, there's probably not. The only thing I would add to what Mr. Bannon has said is, you know, utilities. There, there is a need for some utilities to go through that area as well, waterline and electric as well. So if there's a provision for that, also.
Yes, obviously.
Any other questions from the board members before I go to the professionals?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Mr. Crane, go ahead. Please talk loudly as you can. Thank you.
I, I had a couple of questions for Mr. Parker before I went to professionals, but let's, let's just stick to the hedge road thing. Mr. Parker, is there any reason why you can't put the water line going by the driveway instead of tying in and going through the hedge road, or either jog that water line so you're not going through the existing hedge road?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe the, the water line extends on Mountain Road. I don't think it's on Mountain Road.
It's on Martinsville Road. It comes straight from the house, but then it cuts right through the hedge road.
Yeah, what Mr. Crane wants to know is, why can't he bring those utilities instead of through the hedge road? Why can't he bring them up the driveway from Mount? What Mr. Parker's saying is, he believes that the utilities are in Martinsville and not in Mountain.
Right, that's correct. If there, if.
Uh, there's water in, there's water.
Okay, if there is, that's, I mean, if there is, that's fine. We have no problem with that.
Either way, you can avoid the hedge.
Right.
Along the street.
Right.
So Mr. Crane, you're, you're looking for a condition that would say, and you bring the utilities in, avoid the hedge road.
Correct. And when I was out there, there is water line. I saw a water line. There's a hydro.
Okay, that's fine.
So there's some. He agrees with the condition that the utility shall avoid the hedge road.
Isn't that how it's shown on the drawing?
No.
No, goes to the hedge road.
On sheet three.
Yeah. The, the other question I have is, what are you doing for gas and electric underground for crossing?
Uh, same thing. We'll avoid, use it, we'll avoid the hedge road wherever they come in. Not sure exactly where they're going to come in from, but.
The condition's going to say, all utilities shall avoid.
There's a, in comment number two of my report on page three, there's a, it's a long comment, but buried in there, it says, "To ensure impacts to the existing streetscape will be minimized, the proposed driveway, water line, and other utility connections should be field-located and subject to further review and approval prior to any land service." So they can go out there and market in the field where they want it to go, and the engineering department can go out and do that.
What number is that?
Number two.
Number two in the, in the third part of number two.
Last paragraph.
Well, I said, the one that I undermined is what the condition is. Okay.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Crane?
Yes, I had a couple of questions on the site plan. I don't know, unfortunately, you jumped to the professionals before I could jump in.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead with your questions, Mr. Crane.
Okay.
Mr. Parker, I'm trying to, how, how are you draining the driveway to the seepage pit? Because the contours, looks like you'd have to pipe it, because the contours, to me, don't appear to drain toward the seepage pit.
Yeah, they would, they could be piped into it that way. There's a, there's just, right now, the, the gray, it's been graded to slope away from the house. That could be captured in inlets and directed into the drywells, or through swales. That's another way to do it.
So you'll have inlets by the driveway in the front going to the seepage pit?
Well, either dry, either inlets or swales.
Okay. On your seepage pits, this area for recharge, would you say it, it recharges about a foot of water a year?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Yeah, typical recharge, you know, anywhere from six inches to two feet a year from the rainfall.
Right.
What would the site take, do you think?
Well, as, as part of all building construction in Burners Township, there has to be permeability testing done at the site of the, wherever the drywells or the stormwater management system is going to go. So that would be determined and designed in accordance with, with the requirements at that time.
I guess the question, it appears to me that there'd be more water going into the ground than, than afterwards, because it would pick up pretty much all the rainfall into these seepage pits, and usually you don't get a hundred percent rainfall into the aquifer. Would that be a correct statement?
Correct, yes.
So there'd be, the reason I bring that up, there's a concern about deficits, and it would seem to me that you're adding quite a bit with these seepage pits by picking up pretty much the majority of all the rainfalls. The, the final question I have is, by not disturbing the wetlands on the west side, it appears to be a, a low-slope area, about two percent, would that filter the water from the, the site going, you know, westerly direction by leaving the wetlands?
It absolutely would, yeah. It's, it's, like you said, it's a very flat part of the property back there, and the water will tend to go in there and just filter into the ground, or, you know, slo, very slowly flow off the property, but mostly it'll filter into the ground there. And that's, that's one of the purposes of wetlands, and that's why the state preserves them, in fact.
So there's advantage of leaving the wetlands from a planning and a fiscal standpoint?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Chairwoman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crane. Any other questions of the members? We also have the professionals, and there are two reports that we have to review, as well as two reports from the Environmental Commission, so.
We talked about, really, the, the one comment that I wanted the board to take a look at and decide what to do. It seems like the roadside easement and management strategy that I described seemed to be agreeable to the board. There was one other point that was raised by the applicant in one of the meetings that Dave Schleig and I had, and he was asking about being able to continue to mow the backyard. In, in accordance with DEP's wetlands easement, he will be able to. So he can maintain the existing condition, even though he's going to be putting it in a conservation easement. The question arises, I think, as to whether or not something along the rear property line adjacent to Lot twelve should happen in terms of buffering to the adjoining residential neighborhood, because there's going to be a change in land use in this area that obviously, if before it's been undeveloped. And so I would suggest an, an easement of no disturbance across the rear yard, that is, that common property line between proposed Lot eleven oh two and Lot twelve, of some width. Something in the neighborhood of fifty feet, I suggested in the, in, in the meeting with, with the applicant and his engineer. And I would just pose that question to the board as to whether or not you agree, something in terms of enhancing the, the privacy, because, as, in view of this change in land use right there, makes sense to you, and whether you'd like to see something like that.
Okay, how does the board feel about that? Any comments?
I have a comment from Sheriff John Crane.
Yes?
There, there, since I've been out there, there's a substantial hedge road that shows on the plan. I, I, I don't see the need for any additional landscaping buffer there. It's the wetland, so you're not going to be building anything there. So I, I, I hear, I hear Dave's comment, but if you've been out there, maybe you have or haven't, Dave, but.
Yeah, I have.
And maybe in the winter, maybe it's open. I could be wrong, but during the summer, it looked pretty good to me.
Okay, any other comments for board members about Mr. Bannon's suggestion? I guess I have to struggle.
I don't know what that means. Are you in favor of it or against?
I can, I'm not, I'm not in favor of imposing another condition on the applicant. I think that there's enough space in the wetlands, as Mr. Crane pointed out. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, Mr. Hurley?
I agree with that plan.
Okay, Ms. A.C.?
Thanks.
My face.
Uh, Mr. McNally?
Agree.
Ms. Divergian? Okay, Mr. Bowman?
I agree.
And Ms. Mendu?
I agree. I've been at the site, and the vegetation is substantial.
Okay, so I guess I agree also. So there is, will be no further condition of nature. We do have some professional reports to review, so.
Let me ask you this one, Mr. Parker. Mr. Banish's report, the actual comments in his report, you agree with all of them as conditioned, and specifically, is item 4A in italics would be a condition, 4B in italics would be a condition, and 5A in italics would be a condition? Do you agree?
Well, 4B has been changed, hasn't it, to give that a...
Yeah, 4B has been revised.
Revised.
Yeah, those are things we would agree to, sure. I think we've talked about those.
Is there anything else in Mr. Banish's report that we need to discuss then? Go to the only...
The hedgerows are in, the hedgerows are conditioned.
Yeah, I think, no, I think you're correct. I think that's...
Okay, any, the same thing in Mr. Schley's report? If there's something that you don't have concerns about?
I'm just looking to see if there's anything that Mr. Schley...
The conditions that I flagged there are that the last sentence of paragraph two, the first sentence of paragraph three, paragraph four, the last sentence of paragraph five, paragraph six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Yeah, I don't, I think there's, I don't think there's anything really to discuss. We would agree with those conditions. I think, my only comment is on page three, comment number four, it talks about the septic field. It just says, "If the proposed septic field on lot 11.02 will be raised above the existing ground level," which it will because of the groundwater out there, "supplemental landscape buffering should be provided to adequately screen the septic field from the roads." It seems that there's a pretty thick hedgerow in there already. I'm not sure what additional supplemental landscaping you were thinking of.
You can add as necessary to the...
Okay, that's fine.
...country plan or something like that.
Great, that's fine.
Item four?
Where is the necessary?
We're just adding that.
At the end. I mean, there is existing vegetation that we've been talking about. That might be...
As necessary.
Yeah, subject to review by the township plan.
Okay. So there, we have two Environmental Commission memos.
Can I just, I'm sorry.
Yes.
In number five, my comment number five at the top of page four talks about the threshold for major development, based on the amount of impervious coverage and the amount of disturbance and notification to the developer. I'd suggest that that be included as a D restriction in the subdivision Ds.
Yeah.
Because that's a significant change if that threshold is exceeded.
Mr. Parker?
That's fine. I mean, there's certainly no intent to make this a major project, a major stormwater project.
Right, but to have the subsequent owner on notice that any incremental increase is going to trigger that, they should know that by the time...
Yep, fine.
Okay, there were just two Environmental Commission reports, one from August 24, and this was...
Can I comment on these two?
Yes, of course.
So the October 24 memo, item one, which says that their August 24 remains valid, but when you read the August 24, they're talking about, there's too much wetland disturbance. So the current plan was dated November 5, which has less wetlands disturbance, and that came after the October 24 memo. So my theory is that the memo no longer applies, because the Environmental Commission hasn't done one, hasn't reviewed the November 5 2020 plan.
Okay, but number two might still be valid.
That's true, number two might still be valid.
I think that October 24 date on the Environmental Commission memo is incorrect, because that was only distributed on December 1st. I think they just forgot to change the date.
Cindy will know.
Well, the comment number two definitely refers to the revised plans. That wouldn't make any sense.
Do you think the date on the memo is wrong?
I think the date on the memo should be more like December 1st, certainly after the date on the plan. Cindy, do you know?
I can tell you that this was after the revised plans.
Ah, okay, so you know this was after the revised plans?
Yes.
I take back what I said then.
All right, so I guess...
And now you're going to talk about both of them, both of the comments. Can I still say something about the first comment about the filling of the wetlands?
Yes.
This is my understanding of the filling of the wetlands, both from the prior hearing session, looking at the files, they got someone to file something, and I also spoke with Dave Schley about this. If the applicant, instead of coming to the planning board, if the applicant had gone to the NJDEP first, they could have gotten a general grid six to fill a lot more of wetlands.
That's correct.
They could have filled so much wetlands that if they got the permit and filled the wetlands and then filed the application with the planning board, I don't think they would need the variance from section 21-10.4B, because their lot yield would have been in two, because they would have eliminated the wetlands. Okay, so I save that for two reasons. First, if the board's going to grant the application, I suggest we do it on a C2 basis, and that would be the reasoning, but if the Environmental Commission says that too much wetlands are being filled, more wetlands could have been filled if they had gone to the DEP first than what they're proposing in front of the planning board.
Right, and the applicant has revised plans responsive to the board's recommendations not to fill something.
I understand, but the Environmental Commission, based on what we now know, reviewed this November 5 plan, is still saying that there's too much wetland being filled. And all I'm saying is, factually, that's the Environmental Commission's opinion, that there's too much wetland being filled, but they could have filled a lot more lawfully and legally if they had gone to the DEP first, and then if they needed variance, the Environmental Commission wouldn't even have to write, file, or report. And I'm not against the Environmental Commission or anything like that, I'm just trying to point out, factually, that's how, factually, I see it, unless I'm wrong.
No, that's correct, yep.
So I think we just have to say, this is what the Environmental Commission said, and go from there. What about the second item about the garage?
Sure, you guys are going to talk about that.
So what we showed is that there's a driveway area, a parking area in front of the house. That's just to provide, you know, a parking spot for guests or visitors who are coming to the house, rather than having them park right in front of the garage doors. It's just a thought to have that available for, you know, for a future owner of the home. It still complies, of course, with all the coverage requirements of the zoning for the township, so it will comply with all those requirements, and I just think it'll be a nice feature to have for the home.
So in concept, Mr. Parker, is it fair to say that what you've done here, you added essentially the stylistic element into your design, on the belief that at least conceptually you can show the board what is possible here, even if it doesn't turn out to be the case that this is how the site is developed exactly?
That's correct.
How does the board feel about retaining that stylistic addition? Mr. Demersian?
I think it's totally fine. They're in compliance with the ordinance, and that's fine. Leave it at this.
Okay, Ms. McNally?
In my opinion, the Environmental Commission loses a lot of credibility based on the other items, but that's my opinion.
Okay, Mr. McNally?
No objection for the applicants.
Committeewoman Harris?
I have no objection.
Ms. A.C.
Thanks.
Ms. Hurley?
No objection.
Ms. Mascherangelo?
No objection.
Ms. Mandu?
No objection.
Mr. Baumann?
So long as the landscape screen in the hedgerow that's maintained on Martinsville Road provides adequate coverage for many vehicle storage that's happening there, or any parked vehicles, that's fine. I think that's completely up to the curbing of people doing that.
I agree so well.
Kithy?
Yes. Mr. Crane? Mr. Crane, I'm sorry.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Thank you.
I think that it's a good overflow for parking. You don't want guests parking on Martinsville Road and Mountain Road. That's a busy road, dangerous road, and it will help recharge the ground even more of all that water going into the seepage pits, so I'm for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other, the professionals satisfied that their reports have been covered adequately?
I am, yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm good.
Are there any further, the one thing we have to do is, you are requesting a variance, Mr. Parker, so we need to, and are you going for a C1 or a C2?
Just wait, did you hear what I said before?
Absolutely, yeah. I agree, it's a C2 variance, yep.
C2?
C2. You're adopting my suggestion from before?
Yes, that's correct.
So now we need for you to explain the positive and negative criteria of the C2?
Well, I think the application advances some of the purposes of the municipal land use law, and specifically, purpose E, where it says, "To promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and the preservation of the environment." I think this application certainly preserves the environment more than the previous ones did, and more than what is actually potentially possible out there. I think the proposed hedgerow easements along the frontages of the property also promote, purpose I, which says, "To promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement." So I think those purposes are advanced through the application, and I don't see any negative impacts to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions of Mr. Parker about his justification for the C2 variance? Okay, any further questions of Mr. Parker and the board of professionals, because then I'm going to open it up for questions of Mr. Parker by the public. I now open the public portion. If anybody has any questions of Mr. Parker on his testimony, please come forward. I do have to say on the phone that, that members of the public would like to question Mr. Parker, can be accepted during this period. The questions or comments may be offered in person by hearing or calling 908-202-6426. If you are calling in, please turn off your computer or TV and use Google Duo for your call, and you will be required to provide your name and address before you ask your questions, Mr. Parker. So we'll wait a minute to see if there are any phone calls into the phone, which Ms. Kiefer has. Again, it's 908-202-6426.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to go on the record, I can see the witness. I'm watching the witness, just to get that on the record on the channel.
Pardon?
Mr. Crane said he can see the witness. He just wants that on the record.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Kiefer, any phone calls?
No, Chairwoman.
Okay. Okay, seeing no public comment in person, pardon me, public questioning, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. So now I will open the hearing to public comment, and again, comments may be offered in person or by calling 908-202-6426. Turn off your computer and TV and use Google Duo for your call, and you will, during public comment, be required to provide your name, address, and you will be sworn in prior to making comments. I now open the public comment portion. Any call-ins, Ms. Kiefer?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion. Any summation, Mr. Parker, before we go into deliberations and voting?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, members of the board, we have to deliberate and vote, so who wants to kick this off?
I'll kick it off.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
I think, just for the new board members, there was a history on this application that got brought up, that the setbacks got changed back in 99. The front yard changed from 75 to 100, and because it's the corner lot, the side yard is much bigger, making the building envelope much smaller and more difficult to meet than if they had changed the ordinance in 99. The ordinance changed for the minimum lot area in 2006. Both of these ordinances got passed after the property owner owned the property. I think it's a much better layout. I believe it had too small, the house on the original plan, I think it's about a 5,000 square foot house, which is appropriate probably for this lot. I think the wetlands, staying there as a filter works, I believe you're going to have, as Mr. Parker confirmed, there will be more water going into the ground than was before. As far as the scenic corridor, I think they're doing a good job, much better than the park below us that has a parking lot right on Martinsville Road. So it's application, and I think Mr. Drill said it all, that the applicant could have came in here, cleared all the wetlands, and had a variance-free plan. So I think we got the best of the two worlds. We got a good plan with the wetlands being preserved. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Any other comments from board members?
Just want to applaud the applicant, Mr. Parker, and our board professionals for working together on this. I'm satisfied. I'm ready to vote once deliberations are over.
I agree with those comments. I think that we've, there've been some concerns, and the applicant's addressed all of them. I am the liaison to the Environmental Commission, so I just want to say that I don't think, I'm not a voting member, but I don't think they were aware of the fact that Mr. Drill pointed out. And, you know, they raised their concerns, and we hear them, and we deliberate as we see fit, so thank you.
Any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion then?
So move it.
Okay.
So approve the application with the...
With all the conditions. Okay, Ms. McNally, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. A.C. More call, please. Ms. A.C.
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Demersian?
Yes.
Committeewoman Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Ms. Mandu?
Yes.
Ms. Mascherangelo?
Yes.
Chairwoman Pardici?
Yes, thank you.
And I just want to confirm that we're doing this under a C2?
A C2.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very good, congratulations. We're all going.
Congratulations.
Yes.
We have to get Mr. Esposito, right?
Yeah, they're going to say Esposito from the hall.
Yes.
I need to recuse myself from the next one, so I'll get him while...
Okay.
Game one is over.
And for the record, Deputy Mayor Esposito, 8:15, re-entered the room.
And?
And Committeewoman Harris at 8:15 left the room because she recused. Okay, the next is a post-approval hearing and resolution review of Jay Martin and L. Burman, block 2001, lot 4, 35 Screw Street, minor subdivision, bulk variances, number PB19-006. We are reopening this hearing. Good evening, Mrs. Zelli. Can you tell us why we're reopening this hearing, please?
Chair.
Yes? Yes?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself on this.
Okay, we'll call you back further onto the agenda. Thank you, and that happened at 8:16. Go ahead, Ms. Zelli.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, and members of the board and board professionals, thank you for hearing us again this evening. In answer, Frederick Zelli, Bazanu, LaFleur, and Zelli on behalf of the applicants. In answer to your question, as I understand, the main reason we're here this evening is because there was some kind of audio malfunction at our last hearing, which potentially did not allow members of the public viewing virtually to participate. We don't know if that actually happened, but it's a possibility. So to be cautious, err on the side of caution, we did renotice for this evening. Mr. Drill reviewed and participated in drafting a notice, making it clear to the public and the neighbors that if they wished to participate, we're not able to with the last one because of that audio problem, they could do so this evening.
So procedurally, this hearing commenced on August 18th, 2020, continued to September 8th, 2020, at which time there was deliberation and vote.
Correct.
After that, Cindy discovered the problem, and Mr. Zelli had a very ingenious way of handling it, and I did review the notice and work on it with him, so I will say that the notice is a hundred percent.
It's perfect.
In order, perfectly honest, and Mr. Zelli's suggestion was reopen the hearing, he brings his witnesses. If anyone, and because everyone's gotten notice now, and the notice says what tonight's for, if anyone in the public somehow didn't participate because of the audio mishap, then all they have to do is identify themselves now, and if they want to hear either of the witnesses, we can call the witnesses and have them testify, if they want to question them, they can question them, if they want to make comments, they can make comments. So I would think, with no further ado, that we should find out if any members of the public...
Okay, so I guess, are your, are your expert witnesses here?
Our expert is here, Mr. Holtzman, our engineer is here, and Mr. Martin, the applicant, is here as well.
Okay, so I guess I will open the meeting for public questioning of either Mr. Martin?
Mr. Martin or Mr. Holtzman's our engineer.
Or Mr. Holtzman, if any members of the public have questions?
Not only that, the members of the public have the right, not only question them, but since they couldn't participate, they might not have known what they said, but they have the right to ask Mr. Zelli to recall them to testify.
Okay.
Well, I'd like a clarification on that. Was the audio in both directions, in other words, they couldn't hear, or was it just that they could not speak to us? Because that's a big difference.
They could not hear, there was no...
They could not hear either.
They were totally blocked out.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm now going to open the public questioning, if anybody has questions they'd like to ask of either of these witnesses, or any clarifications?
Or if they, or if they want to testify.
Or if they, if they want to, them to testify on a specific issue because they did not hear what they said. I also say that we will, you could call in the 908-202-6426 to turn off your computer or television and use Google Duo. You will be required to provide your name and address during the public questioning portion, so I now open the public questioning portion of the witnesses.
Someone who's coming?
Yes, Mr. Santoro, good evening, how are you?
Hi, hello, my name is Randy Santoro, I, I know many of you, but not all of you. As Skippy knows, I used to be on the planning board for eight years.
And what is your address?
My address is 15 Spruce Street, so I am, I did get a notice, thank you, for, about tonight's hearing and the previous hearing. I mostly have a comment which I'll reserve for that portion, I'm not sure if this is a question, so I wanted to bring it up now. My issue is about the trees that were removed prior to the application coming.
Okay, that, right, and that was dealt with extensively, and so that would be, I guess, one of the...
Who's the right person?
...we call someone, because he obviously didn't hear about that, so he can hear.
And to back up one second, I, I will attest that the second hearing in September that you mentioned, John, there was an audio problem when I was listening to it. But who is the correct person to address the question?
Would be Mr. Holtzman?
Please come forward, Mr. Holtzman. Do you want to re-swear, or he's still under oath?
Well, we reopened this, this hearing, so Mr. Holtzman is still under oath.
Okay.
We just confirmed when I swore him in. I swore in Mr. Holtzman, August 18th, 2020, you understand that you are men under oath, correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Santoro with your question, please.
Okay, my question, based, based on what I heard during the, the hearing, the two parts of the hearing, and also in the reports, is that living on Spruce Street and seeing when the trees were removed, before a tree permit was applied for, and let me back up, and some of the members of the planning board know that I am the chair of the tree commission, so I'm very familiar with what the tree protection ordinances are in our My question is, how was it determined the number of trees and the dimension or the, the diameter of the trees that were removed? Because what I read is that it was unknown.
This, this plan is not...
Can you guys switch, have you come up to the microphone now?
This plan...
You don't want to talk, stand right in back of those people, look over your shoulder.
Okay.
Yeah.
This plan does not identify the trees that were previously removed. Right, that's, that was how I understood, so. Was there any testimony about?
Yes, there was, Mr. Schly, we discussed that. If you could, you know, summarize for Mr. Santoro, what was that?
Where the board ended up on that after the discussion was that the, the applicant will work with the engineering department, provide whatever additional information they can provide, and they'll have to provide replacement trees to the satisfaction of the engineering department.
Okay.
They had, they had provided a, a sketch with some notes and stuff on it, back when the tree removal was initially discovered, that it was done illegally, and there's some information there, but not enough to come up with the normal, the normal way we would calculate tree replacement, but the, the engineering department will get to the, as much information as we can, and will assign a replacement number.
Thank you, Mr. Schly.
Let me just read into the record, I'm not testifying, from my notes, this is going to be a condition of the approval. Applicants shall replace trees to be removed and the trees that were removed last year without permits to the satisfaction of the township engineering department. That was condition number one. Number two, applicants shall plant landscape buffer for board landscape committee site visit with neighborhood input. Applicants to notice the landscape committee visit.
Okay.
So that means they're going to notice it, so that neighbors will know when the landscape committee is out there, so they can have...
Well, I would like to be included on that notice.
Well, you within 200 feet?
I'm sorry?
Or you, you live within 200 feet?
Yes, yes, and I received the proper notice about the meeting, so.
You'll be, you'll be...
Get that notice.
But I also would like to have on the record that, as far as the number of trees, that, I have photographs that there are at least 10...
On this one?
Wait till public comment.
It should be, okay, that's what I, the question was.
And down the street...
And the other, the other point I have, and I think it's for comment, but I just want to make sure, is about some of locations of planting trees. I don't, I don't think that's really a question, it's a comment, or maybe I can ask the, this gentleman again.
Why don't you start with the question?
About the screening, I know there was testimony, neighbors were interested about screening, and there was an agreement to put some screening in. Is it proper to ask a question about what the...
Yes, of course.
Okay, so what screening was it?
Mr. Jones, do you want to first read the condition from your notes as to that? Yeah. Did I just read that one?
That was about right now.
I thought that I said, first condition was replace trees, the second condition was the applicant shall plant landscape buffer for the board landscape committee site visit with the neighborhood input. Applicants to notice the land, the landscape committee visit.
Okay, my apologies, yes, okay.
So is the location of that buffering in the plan, or is that something for the landscape committee to do at the...
And that's going to be a question for Mr. Schly.
There's, there's trees shown on the plan, but not, they don't satisfy what the board's condition is going to say. The plan will have to be revised before it's signed up by the board, board secretary, but further than that, the landscape committee is going to go out there and make the final determination.
So any comments about the location of that, is it better for that to be done during that process?
It actually is better to be done during that process, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I agree that there should be buffering, and my question, just to tell you, the, the thing I, I'm not sure came up is, since a lot of trees were removed, I think there's a need to possibly put some trees on the remaining lot, not just on the new lot that's being created, because a lot of the trees that were taken down now affect the residents on Spruce Street as far as the sound from the highway.
So why don't you make that, turn that into a question for Mr. Schly?
Okay.
Do you agree that?
So my question would be, when, when the engineering department is considering the buffering, can you also consider buffering to help with noise abatement on the, or the remaining lot with, with existing houses? In other words, not directly up against the neighbor, but, but houses between, excuse me, trees between there and the highway to help with noise abatement? Because some of the trees removed have caused there to be some boom, but there is room to put some in, so the only point is, can, can more easily planned?
Replace trees in the same location where trees had been removed?
Or wherever would be the right place to help abate the noise?
I couldn't possibly tell, the engineering department would be able to speak to the proper location as far as to abate the noise.
Right, so in the same place is fine, as long as it, it's compatible with putting a house there, obviously. If you're approving a home, you have to have room to put a home there.
Well, you're talking about on the remaining lot.
Yes, I'm sorry, on the remaining lot, that's already built, that's true.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know the answer to this question, but are trees on the remaining lot removed?
I don't think so, but I don't know for sure.
Do we know?
Not based on the area disturbance we had mapped, although we did know the exact tree count, we do, we did map an area of disturbance.
Okay, so maybe that, we don't know the answer to that, but my question to Mr. Schly is, can it be considered to put plant, to put trees on the remaining lot if there's a proper location to them?
Well, yes, the remaining lot is part of the...
Part of the approval, yeah, it's part of the application.
Yeah, the, the, the plans show some evergreen trees along the proposed subdivision line.
Okay.
You're talking about trees that would be located more toward, behind the existing house.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's something that can be determined during the landscape committee review.
That's probably more appropriate than trying to do it here.
The applicant can reserve a, a few of the required replacement trees and not plant them until the landscape committee goes out, and is it five or six trees, something like that?
Okay.
Then you can talk specifics and put a stake in the ground.
Okay, and my other question, and this may be for Mr. Schly also, is about the formula for replacing the trees, since we don't know how many, we don't have a, a agreed-upon number for what was removed, how do we come up with the replacement amount? And also, would the standard development rules apply? If the trees are not planted on the property, would, would the owner need to put into the tree replacement fund?
Okay, I'll take the last question first, I mean, there's no reason why the, the applicant won't be able to find room to plant trees, so I think that the contribution is out.
That's fine, we'd rather have the trees, so that's a good answer.
No discussion whatsoever about any contribution, this is pure tree planting.
Okay, that clears it up, thank you. So my concern then is to make sure, maybe this is more of a comment, so you can stop me that.
Hold that, hold that.
Okay.
Any more questions, Mr. Santoro?
I think that's the questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Ms. Kiefer, anybody on the phone?
Madam Chair, no, I have no one on the phone.
So I will close the public questioning of the witnesses. Now reopen the hearing for public comment, Mr. Santoro.
Yes.
We'll have to swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be true, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and I also have to say that we will take public comment by calling 908-202-6426. Turn off your TV and computer, use Google Duo, you will have to provide your name, address, and be sworn in. Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Santoro.
Thank you. Randy Santoro, 15 Spruce Street, thank you. I'll keep my comments short, I appreciate the work that was done, and I like the plan that trees are being planted, so I would encourage, which is what I understood from listening to the testimony, that native trees are planted, and I would encourage the participation of both the planning board and the landscape committee and the neighborhood, as you've already decided, to be involved. And I, as I mentioned earlier, I would like to be part of, notified for that, so I can, I can share in that review. But I think that, I don't have a problem putting a house there, I'm just shielding the neighbors, I know there were a lot of concerns from the immediate neighbors about what the visibility is, I don't want to discount those, I think they're all valid, there should be proper buffering. But also, as I mentioned in my questions, there should also be a consideration for putting trees in to help with some noise abatement, and, and to get something back to where they were, a different place, because you need room for the, the house, so. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
But the thing you said...
Any other comment from people here in person? Any phone calls in, Ms. Kiefer?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, I will close the public comment portion, now what's next?
Right, so my suggestion is, the board already deliberated and voted, has now had some additional questions and additional comments, so unless, I'm going to ask Mr. Zelli, do you want another deliberation or vote, or are you good, resting on the deliberation and vote, just me asking if anyone changes their deliberation and vote?
I'm fine with that, that's fine.
Does anyone want to change their deliberation and vote from last time? Just for the record, everyone shaking their head, no? No? Okay.
I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, before we go into executive session, since it's about the planning board, planning board professionals, I'd like to have, first of all, Ms. Kiefer, do we have anything on the agenda for December 22nd?
No, we do not.
And we got to call Ms., someone called Ms. Harris, Committee Woman Harris back in?
And someone has to call Mr. Crane back on the phone.
Yep.
Madam Chairwoman, just because our application goes directly to what you just asked. Mr. Drill and I talked about the possibility perhaps of having our resolution reviewed on the 22nd.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
Is it critical between December 22 to the first meeting in January?
When is the first meeting in January? Do we know?
19.
19.
19, so it's a full month later.
Is it critical, I mean, it's in the middle of the winter.
And then, and it's...
Well, it's, remember, this isn't a development issue, it's, it's a...
And it's Christmas week, Sally.
Understood, I withdraw my question. Have a wonderful holiday.
Is there anything on the agenda for December 22nd?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, I hereby cancel the December 22 meeting. Any comments from members? Because I would like to have the board professionals lead for the rest of the evening, so that we're, we're just looking at the agenda, any comments from members? And just a public thank you to Mr. Hurley and Committee Woman Harris for their service on the planning board, and best of luck to both of you in your future endeavors. Any other comments from members? Okay, comments from staff? No?
No comment, because when we leave the room, can we like leave the building?
Yes, that's why I'm doing this now, because we just come out of executive session, and then we'll adjourn.
No, just simply to say happy holidays to everyone, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you. Thanks.
Okay, so I'm now going to read the resolution for the executive session. Whereas in SA 10, colon 4, there's 12, the open public meetings there, authorizes this board to exclude the public from their portion of the meeting in which this board discusses certain matters. Whereas the board is about to discuss such matters, specifically matters involving the employment and terms and condition of employment of professionals appointed by the board, whereas this board believes the public should be excluded from those discussions. Now therefore being resolved by the Burness Township Planning Board on December 8, 2020, that the board now go into closed session and the public be excluded, and that the board believes that the discussions conducted in the closed session should be disclosed, disclosed to the public after the board takes formal action, when it returns to open session, and the minutes of the open session should include the matters discussed in closed session. The above resolution, do I have a motion to approve this resolution to go into the executive session? Thank you, Mr. Hurley, second?
I'll second.
Second, Committee Woman Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay, everybody have a nice holiday, and I'll see you in January.